Again, thank you and welcome and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
First agenda item is approval of minutes. As every member had an opportunity to read the minutes. Your motion from Patrick, second from Scott. All in favor? unanimous. Okay. Next agenda item, announcements, correspondence and distributions. Any announcements? Moving right along. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here to come forward and speak? Wow.
We usually ask that to an empty room.
Yeah. And the next agenda item is the recognition of students Milford High School Advanced Placement Scholars. Mrs. Bonak?
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. It's my great pleasure to be here this evening and I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to come tonight with these outstanding student scholars. They contribute so much to the school community, not only through their academic achievement, which we're recognizing this evening, but they are talented student athletes and student musicians, artists. They're leaders in our school community. They're leaders in the community. They devote a great deal of time to service activities, not only because they're on honor societies, but because they are committed to their school and to their community. So it is my honor to present these fine young men and women to you and to recognize their parents as well, because without the support of their devoted parents, who have seen them through for the last 13 years of their education, they might not be here this evening. It's through the parent's support, the time dedicated to a lot of nights of encouragement, studying, many, many nights of carpoolsing and going to different academic events and athletic events and music and theater. So I thank your parents as well for guiding you to this evening. The College Board Program recognizes students as Advanced Placement Scholars and it is because these students have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through the Advanced Placement Scholars Award Program. We're going to celebrate the excellence of our students tonight and show them our gratitude and our appreciation for their achievement through some certificates that we have for them tonight and also with the gift from the school committee. So this evening, we are honoring three levels of excellence in student achievement. The first level that we are honoring tonight is the Advanced Placement Scholar Award. And the students who have earned the AP Scholar Award have received scores of three or higher on three or more of the exams. So when I read your name, I ask that you come forward to our Chairman of our School Committee, Mr. Walsh and Dr. Tremblay, and I will come over here. The first name, the first student scholar I would like to honor is Thomas Jacobson. Next, I would like to honor Janice Madden. Next, I would like to recognize our AP Scholars with honor. This award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. The next level of honor is the AP Scholar with Distinction. This award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. And lastly, I'm pleased to tell you that I was notified that we have two students who have been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program as commended students for their performance on the national PSAT exam. These students received letters of commendation for their outstanding promise and academic achievement. And these students are Maya Paterno.
That's fine. I'm gonna say that.
Maya, that's Maya's. Oh, there's something on that. Okay, so we'll get that. Maya, I will correct that and get back to you.
You can buy another water bottle.
Congratulations to you all. And I also want to share with the committee and with the community, some of the colleges that you have applied to and some of you have heard as well. But I know we're also still waiting for some of the schools. I'm still early in the process, but I thought I'd share that with you. So these students in the room tonight have applied to, and this is a sampling, Boston College, Boston University, Dartmouth College, Fordham University, College of the Holy Cross, Williams College, Lehigh University, Dartmouth College, Duke University, Emerson College, University of Massachusetts, Northeastern University, the University of Michigan, Middlebury College, the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and the University of Notre Dame, just to name a few. So quite an impressive group of young men and women and we're very proud of you and we congratulate you on your success and your accomplishments. Well done.
With that, I'll open it up to the board. Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Patrick?
Yeah, just I know how difficult it is to manage an AP workload and all the school activities that you have to do and you should all be incredibly proud of yourselves, as I'm sure your parents are. I am pleased to know everyone here in the school departments also incredibly proud of what you've all accomplished and I hope each and every one of you places out of at least one entry-level course when you get to college, because I know sometimes it's hard to get those done, so. Thank you.
Scott?
Just congratulations. You know, there's 16 of you that received awards this evening and two of you that received two awards this evening. So certainly just a tremendous accomplishment between everyone that was, you know, that was here tonight and the amount of work that you've all put in and, you know, I certainly appreciate Mrs. Bonak as well and I think she did a nice job also of recognizing the parents, because I realize that the parents put in a lot of work as well. And there's, for the students that are in the room, you may not realize as much as mom and dad are worrying and are up there sweating with you, even though they're not in the classroom with you, they're certainly there and supporting you. So congratulations to everyone here this evening.
If I may interject, I would like to make one last recognition with regard to the National Merit Scholarship Corporation and the scholarship program with regard to the letters of commendation. So forgive me for overlooking this, but I do want to ask Jackson Lynch to come forward because he too is a commended student in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Well done, Jackson. Congratulations. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Jen?
I just wanted to also comment that obviously you're all really smart, young men and women, to be in these AP classes and to have gotten where you are and that really impressive list of colleges that your principal read off. And sometimes when you're really smart, it's easy to take the easy road and to kind of try to slide by and get by, because you have the ability to do that. And all of you have really shown that you're not, that's not the kind of kids that you are. You've obviously taken on an additional workload, you've put your all into it and you've really accomplished a lot and your outcomes have been great. So good for you and I hope that you continue with that hard, really great work ethic as you move forward, because it's really going to take you far. So kudos to all of you. You've done a wonderful, wonderful job.
I'd like to just say, I've been a member for seven years and it's evenings like this that really make it worthwhile to sit in these chairs, to see the accomplishments of the students, all the activities that go on in the Milford Public Schools. It just makes all of us so very, very proud. So great job and thanks for a good job. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again for being here tonight. And if I may, you know how much I like my Twitter account and my pictures. So if we could go outside just for one moment? Yes?
Are we taking a Twitter picture?
We're taking a Twitter picture. It's an inside joke. We do this a lot at school.
It's up to Mike.
What's that? Yeah, absolutely. Take your time.
She's not coming. She's gonna...
Oh, okay.
It's hard, man. It's hard. Some of those kids have all even course loads.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, yeah, some of those students.
To your point, Patrick. Not just one year.
Yeah, junior and senior year.
Junior and senior year complete AP course loads.
It's hard.
It's really impressive. It really is.
I really meant that. I hope some of them do place out of like, you know, Bio 101 or...
Yeah, I mean, really. For their time and the money.
Good evening, Lenny.
Yeah. Lenny, long time no see. It's been hours since the last time I said it. Lenny, good evening.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna move ahead one item and then go back.
Helen, how are you?
Lenny, how are you, buddy?
Hi, Len.
It's all yours, Lenny.
Transcendent, yes. We went up the bid, as you know, and the low bidder was Vendetti Motors. So I recommend that we, that the school committee signed a contract to the Vendetti Motors. They've been with us for 20 years and we've had good luck with them, good service, so that we recommend that.
Scott, all in favor? unanimous.
Thank you.
As usual, if Len recommends it, then it's probably the smart thing to do, so.
Well, thank you.
I want to echo that also, you know, we had the opportunity to talk to the bus drivers last week as well for the holidays and just to echo the great relationship we've enjoyed over the years with Vendetti and really it's been a great partnership, so glad to know that you're back with us.
Isn't all saying if it's not broken, don't fix it?
Don't fix it, right.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Oh, we are.
It's okay with the chairman.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Absolutely, yes.
Don't try to escape, Len.
Okay.
So is rude.
You got through the easy one, now we get...
Right.
Go ahead, Lenny. Thank you.
So the next agenda item is relative to the request from the school committee to put together a budget impact to transporting our walkers. So Lenny and I got together, we did two scenarios. One would be if we transported all students K through 2, the full budget impact would be about $317,000, which equates out to five additional buses. In the second scenario that we did, we did K through 5, which would be approximately 11 buses and that would come at a cost of $698,742. I did put in the packet to the committee that there are other factors involved other than the budget impact to consider, three of which are that our building loops currently are too small for the additional buses, so we'd have to seriously look at that if we were to move forward. The second factor to consider is the routes would be longer in time for the kids. So obviously, if you're picking up additional kids, the routes are going to be a little bit longer. The third impact, which would be there could be a potential contract issue or violation where if the routes are longer, we're going to have arrival and dismissal times that are going to be maybe a little bit longer to what we're currently handling in our buildings. So that could cause us a possible contract issue.
When you're loading an extra five buses, it's going to take longer and loading, of course, with the 11 buses, it would actually take probably three times as long. So that's where you, you know, you could get some contractual from your teachers.
Yeah.
Now, also, I just wanted to let you know, I've included this in our budget impact information for our Saturday meeting. So I did put these two scenarios on our initiatives so that we can talk about these, the impact of this with other requests that we have, so that the committee has a full picture, so that you just don't have to look at this one budget impact tonight. We can actually talk about it on Saturday.
Well, Kathy, that's what I was going to recommend as chairman, I was going to say we should move it to Saturday's discussion.
But with Lenny here, ask questions, you know.
Got a question from Ash. So Len, you and I had a chance to talk about this briefly a little bit previously, so thank you so much for doing this. I do think it's an important cost analysis that we do understand, kind of, not only that we understand as a committee, but that the public as well has an understanding of what the impact is and how that works. This was done, and Len, if you could just kind of talk about what really that impact is? You talked about the number of students that are impacted and why those numbers are as high as they are. If you can just kind of shed a little bit of light on that and then I just, I've got one extra ask.
So with the K to 2, actually, you're only looking at all kindergarten students on bus at this time. So it's actually just adding the 1 and 2, okay? So what that would be is approximately 300 students. And we use a number of 60, even though you can actually put a few more on a bus, but use a number of 60 just to give us a little room for growth and also, again, with that timing issue, okay? Because there's two things with busing. There's time and there's space on the bus, okay? So that, so the impact, again, is 300 students and then the K through 5, which is the 1 through 5, if we bust all them, we're talking approximately 660 students, okay? And that's going off the numbers. What I did was I used, you know, the projected numbers for next year, for next year, okay? I did explain, I think it was to Patrick, that I wasn't able to use our computer system only because we're actually getting ready for Woodland now and for middle school, closing middle schoolies, so we're actually starting to work on that. But I did it, you know, taking, again, taking our numbers off what we're using and I feel comfortable with what I have. And that might be off, you know, I've got some students, but not very many. And then I did go out and look at the timing of the different schools. So for instance, at Memorial School, it's taken about 14 minutes to load the buses. So you know, that's just with six. So if you add five more, you'll have to throw some more time after that 14 minutes. And at Brookside, it's taken about 17 minutes for their six buses, okay? So you're probably looking at probably three, if you go with the first scenario with the five, you're looking at probably three and two, probably three at Brookside and two at Memorial, because Brookside does have a higher population.
Yeah. And just for the, again, for the, thank you, Lenny, for the benefit of the committee as well as for the public that may be watching, how many students approximately do we bust right now?
Approximately 2,200.
Okay, so if we were to try and do K through 5, we're talking about an extra, what'd you say, 600 students?
Yeah.
So I mean, you're talking about like a 40%, you know, 35 to 40% increase in the number of students that we're busting. So it's, I think it's important that we kind of put that in the context as well that, as we're kind of making our decisions, like it's a, there's a reason why it's a, because I first looked at it and went, wow, those are some huge, huge numbers. Well, it's a high percentage of students that we'd be increasing. And at the younger grades, as we, as you had mentioned previously, they all ride. Everyone that's eligible, they all ride the bus. You get into high school and they're, you know, they can play football on those buses because there's only a handful of kids that are on them. But certainly the younger kids, they're all on, because that's, it is that. Is there a possibility, because this is if we just bust everybody K through 2 and maybe even for Saturday and even like that, what is that, and I don't know how easy this is or how difficult, because I'm cognizant of the fact that it's 8:30 on a Thursday. What does a half mile look like? What does that do for anything?
Want me to take a look at that? I can do that.
I don't know how difficult that is. What does a half mile look like? Just so, as we're sort of making our decisions on Saturday, at least, and kind of starting to have some preliminary conversations, what is that?
Half miles of K through 2?
K through 2, yeah.
And you want me to do this on a Friday?
No, that's why I said, that's why I said, if you can't do it, like I said, I'm cognizant of the fact that it's 8:30 on a Thursday, so.
Hopefully, I should be able to get it done.
No, I appreciate that. I think it's valuable information as we get into our conversations.
I should be able to do that.
Thanks, Lenny.
Okay.
Excuse me, Len.
Yes, I'm sorry.
How many buses did you say currently go to Memorial and Brookside?
Six and six.
Six and six.
Six each?
Yeah.
Joe?
I don't mean to pile on here, Lenny, but could you look at a third scenario for us?
Sure.
So last year during budget season, we explored having a late bus after school and I wouldn't mind looking at that again for a discussion on Saturday, because I just think having that late bus is a cost-effective way of extending the school day and offering more programs and services to our kids. So if we had a late bus, you'd have more kids going to the homework club, going out for extra help. I think it would certainly help with intramural sports if you start to build out that program. I think you'd get a lot more participation there. It's a way to offer more enrichment programs to our kids. If we have students with special needs or ELL students, it's a great way to give them additional services after school. So it's something that I wouldn't mind exploring and discussing a little bit further on Saturday, because I think there are a lot of benefits to that.
I'll be able to get you a price per bus and what happens with a late bus is, you know, you have to cover the whole town and of course, you know how Milford is with traffic. So you'd probably have to, depending on where the students are, but more than likely would be, you know, like currently, we do have Woodland, is it called Woodland La Jive's now? Yeah. So we're running that with two buses, well, yeah, two buses right now. So you'd need probably two buses to keep those runs within an hour.
Gotcha.
You know, because if you go with one bus, you know, that run would be over an hour just with traffic.
Yeah.
You know, just, you know, just trying to get down to 109, you know, at that time of the day would take some time. So, but I'll give you a price per bus and then I'll give you a couple of scenarios like of, you know, what we, where the population would be.
Yeah, that'd be great, even if we find a way to sort of pad the price into some of the programs and services. So if we offer an intramural program, we charge whatever, 10 bucks for the program, maybe that can offset some of the costs associated with the busing, so we can talk a little bit about it.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
I've got a couple of questions.
Jen?
So I've never seen the buses broken down by bus, so that $63,000 is such a huge number. What does that entail?
It's a two-tier system.
Okay.
So it's, our buses will do a high school or middle school run first.
Okay.
And then we'll do an elementary run, okay?
Okay.
In the morning and in the afternoon.
Yes.
And it's for the 180 days, you know, of school, so that's where that figure comes. It's like a 3, 3.50.
3.50 to 90.
Yeah, 3.50 to 90.
We know that, right, Julie?
Yeah. So 3.50 to 90 a day.
So if you did the buses just for K to 5, they wouldn't be doing, would you have any that wouldn't have to do a middle or a high school run?
But the thing with the contractor, if he has a bus, you know, he has to buy the bus.
Yeah.
You can't pay the driver just for one tier.
Right.
So that's why we use them two-tier.
Okay.
Okay? You know, I mean, would the price be a little cheaper, probably, but not enough to not use it? So that's where you, you know, because I mean, investment of a bus is about $100,000.
So what happens is when we add a bus, the bus company has to purchase that bus. So Vendetti may not have that bus in stock, so they have to go and purchase another bus. So that's part of it.
Right.
Okay. And then just my other question was, if you wanted to talk about allowing children, and, you know, I asked Kathy earlier, and I do think it's important to make the point that we do bus kids within one mile who live one mile or further, whereas most districts follow the law, which is two miles.
Two miles.
So we're already giving parents a lot more than our neighboring districts do or that we're required to do by law. But if we wanted to allow parents to purchase a bus pass and purchase a ride on a bus, what would that look like or what would the complications be with that?
It would become a bookkeeping, you know, a lot of bookkeeping.
Yeah.
And I know that in Ballenham, they did something similar.
Yeah.
And they tried to do a deadline of like May 1st and of course, everybody comes August 30th.
Yeah.
So now you have to change your routes, add a bus, and it becomes very messy, you know? And it, so that, you know, it's, that's tough.
Yeah.
The other piece that, to that point, Jen, I think one of the other things that you were, you had mentioned too was it's just as much about space as it is, like we need the extra buses, not, yes, for the extra, to accommodate the timing from a bus route perspective, but it's also, I mean, these buses are filled.
Yes.
Already. So even if there was the ability to, and I want to make sure very clear, I'm not in favor of charging for busing of any stretch of, stretch, stretch of imagination, but even if there was that availability to kind of raise our hand and say, hey, I'll even pay for it on my own, there's no place to put them.
Yeah. That, most of our, I mean, and our elementary buses are full, you know, our Woodland buses are pretty full. By moving the fifth grade up at the Woodland, I think actually is going to help us, you know? And then the other thing that we're doing now too is, you know, Shining Star, we're up to three buses there. So what I'm doing is I'm running an elementary tier, you know, this is the first tier and the second tier is the preschool. So I took three buses out of the mix of the high school, they moved it down to the preschool, which is, you know, is a savings, savings to us, because before we were paying for that third tier. So we were able to do that too.
Okay. Any other member? Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you.
Thanks, Len.
Thanks, Lenny.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep, now we go back to the Milford High School liaison to the school committee.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Tenzio. I'm the senior class president.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So a few things. First, we have our prom fair coming up, which is, which was planned and is hosted by the HTM program on January 15th, which is our half-day. It'll be in the cafeteria. They said there'll be 17 local vendors and businesses and there'll be discounts and appointments that we can make and the businesses will be promoting their own services while they're there. And we have services such as hair, nails, tanning, dress alterations, makeup, tux rentals, limo rentals, and flowers. We had financial aid night on the 5th. A representative from the Massachusetts Educational Finance Authority presented to parents and students in grades 10 through 12 on paying for higher education. Parents learned about how to file the FAFSA and qualify for financial aid for college. MIFO was, has evening and weekend events statewide to assist parents in filing the FAFSA. The website is fafsaday.org. We have parent-to-parent, student-to-student, an event coming up on January 14th at 6:00 PM. The alumni and parents of alumni will meet with current students and parents to discuss their experience in the college admission and financial aid process. Students will discuss their college experience. We have Academic Scope and Sequence and Courses, of Courses Parent Evening on Thursday, January 21st at 6:30 PM in the MHS auditorium. The curriculum team leaders, guidance director, and administrators will present the scope and sequence for the 2016-2017 MHS course offerings. The purpose of this event is to inform parents of the academic offerings, levels and sequencing of courses that their students will have throughout their high school career. The 2016-2017 program of studies will be posted at the high school website at the end of January. A translator will be in attendance for translation services. And then lastly, we had a unified basketball game the other night. I had the chance to talk to Mr. Walsh, one of their coaches. It was against Sharon and the RJV girls' basketball team was on the unified team with the special ed kids. And he said that this was a perfect opportunity for the kids to get to experience playing with regular ed students. And then lastly, we had a unified basketball game the other night. I had the chance to talk to Mr. Walsh, one of their coaches. It was against Sharon, and the RJV girls' basketball team was on the unified team with the special ed kids. And he said that this was a perfect opportunity for the kids to get to experience playing with regular ed students and the specialist students to play together and have fun with the crowd watching. He said that they've been practicing all fall. They had a tournament in early December, and they have another game at Sharon on February ninth.
Great.
Very nice.
Excellent job. So I must say, Alex, she's very humble. She, um, she is an outstanding leader for her class. She, I have the pleasure and the privilege of starting every day with Alex coming to my office to do daily announcements. So we have a chance to touch base every day about what's going on at school and things that are important to student life. And she's just been a tremendous student leader, student achiever in her class for all of her classmates. And she represents us so well in the community. In fact, I was looking at a picture of you from, you were a bell ringer for the Rotary last year. We were going through some different Niasse evidence. And, um, you know, that, one of the things that we, we promote with Niasse is our involvement in the community, our students' involvement, faculty, and so forth. And I have a great picture of you as a bell ringer last year at the holiday. It's excellent, you and two of the other students, so. The Rotary has it in their newsletter, so that's where it's at. So, um, so we're here tonight also just to give an update on one of the items in our school improvement plan. And if you recall, last year, one of the topics or actions I have in the, um, in the school improvement plan under family and community engagement is the seniors' last week, the seniors' last week of school and the activities and, and how to celebrate the end of the school year for the senior class. So we're here to talk a little bit about updates to that and that process and how that's been moving along. So, um, so what, at the beginning of the school year, um, this, we have two committees involved with this. We have the principals advisory committee, which is in a group of faculty members and staff who I meet with once a month on many different issues important to school. But this has been a standing item at that committee as well as the school council. And the school council is, is an assembly of students and parents and teachers and community members who also work with me on improve, uh, the, ensuring the success of the school improvement plan plus other matters that are important to the school community. So, um, so both of those two groups I have been working on with discussing, how is it that we celebrate the end of the school year? And how do we do that in a way that is consistent with our mission statement, with our core values for student learning, with our twenty-first century learning expectations, all of which are right up on the wall in this room? So we looked at all of that, we looked at our revised mission statement, we looked, um, we, we thought a lot about the, the, um, there's a part in our new mission statement that talks about teaching personal responsibility for decision-making and accountability and so forth, and our core values of, of strength, opportunity, achievement, and respect, along with our twenty-first century learning expectations of which we have critical thinking and technology and communication and active learning. But we also once again added respect and to put the emphasis on respect of oneself, respect of one's school, one's community, and so forth. So we, we've had a lot of dialogue around, how do we, how do we take expectations that already live in the, in the student handbook? Expectations that we have every single day for our students, all one hundred and eighty days of, of the school year? And, and beyond, if, if we're doing everything the way we should be doing, that carries into the student's life three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But we want to make sure that we, we help our students to understand that high expectations are every day. It, it, it's not some days, it's not some weeks, some months, but it's every day with, in the learning community. And so what we've done is we've taken a lot of those expectations and put them into a contract. And so we have a contract for the seniors, we also have one for the juniors. But the one for the seniors is the one that we're primarily moving forward at this time. The junior contract is more around prom and expectations around the prom and the fact that students have to be in good standing. So you, you have to be passing your class, you have to have, be in compliance with the attendance rules, with the discipline rules and so forth. Language that lives in the handbook as it is. But I think that when you call out the language and you put it in a document and you present it to a student and a parent and kind of put the emphasis back on, these are privileges. The prom is a privilege, attending senior week activities, the awards night, the, um, the athletic awards banquet, the senior night, graduation itself, attending the graduation event. These are all privileges for students that are earned through compliance with expectations. So what we've done is we, we've developed two contracts, we pulled some language out of the handbook, we've put down the expectations in these contracts. And what I would like to do, and what I intend to do, is have parent meetings, at least three, that will be either, at, there'll be one at night, there'll be at least one on the weekend, maybe two. I know parents are very busy, so I want to make sure I, I do this at times that are convenient for parents to come in. But I want to make it very clear that these are the expectations for students, for seniors, in particular, leading into the senior week, during the senior week, and at graduation. And that there is a way to celebrate the end of the school year, there's a way to do it with pride and dignity and honor. And, and that, that's the expectation. So Alex and I talked about this at length. She has been very, very involved as well, she, she's read the contract. I have not disclosed yet with, fully what my idea is, but I do have an idea that I think that the school community, that the school committee, that the students and the faculty, the parents would consider to be a celebratory end of the school year, particularly on that last day of school, something that we, that we can all be very, very proud of, so.
Very nice. I'll open it up to the members for discussion. Everybody's all set. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
Nice job, thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is the first reading of the Milford Public Schools policy files. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
All right, so this should be pretty quick. We, we had two outstanding policies in that section B that we wanted town council to review before we brought it forth to the, this committee. One of the policies was specifically regarding the school attorney, which is why we wanted him to take a look at it. Essentially, what we've done here, you'll find when you read the policy, is just reflect exactly what's being done in practice today. So the school committee has access to town council, the superintendent has access to town council. We have some flexibility if we need to bring in some outside council as well. So it essentially just reflects what we're doing in practice. Now, this is a, a first reading, so, you know, per our, our policies, we don't, um, we don't need to make a motion today, but just wanted to open it up to see if anyone on the committee had any, any feedback or concerns.
So there's really no change in it, Joe?
Well, so the reality is, we didn't have this policy in place before. Even though the policy was on the website, it was never actually adopted.
Oh, okay.
So this would be adopted for the, the first time.
And there's actually, I, I, there's some, I mean, we kind of drafted this. We took what the MASC uses, theirs is very different than our sort of practice. And we sort of discussed it in the meeting, and we didn't feel like there was anything wrong with the way that we access town council. So we just sort of drafted our own policy that, that memorializes how we currently deal with town council. So this would be, all, this is all new, essentially.
So anyone on the committee have any, any questions or comments at all? Okay.
No, I've, I mean, I don't, I don't have anything, I don't have any recommendations for adjustments. I'm, I'm actually fine with it is, I realize it's a first reading, but I'll be, I'd be comfortable with making a motion and rather than have to, if there's no, if there's no recommended adjustments, I don't see a reason why we'd need to read it a second time.
Jerry's already seen this too, right?
Yeah, did Jerry see the second version with the updates that we made?
Jerry has not seen the revised school attorney.
Yeah, that was going to be my next, that was going to be my last question. My last piece was just, has the town council reviewed every, all final?
The special meetings policy.
Okay.
He did review, I've not shown the school attorney.
Yeah, we should let Jerry take a pass at that.
With the sign off of town, town council.
So we'll just, we'll have Jerry take a look at that one, just to approve it from his side, and then we'll bring it forth again for a second reading. Yeah, and then the, the second policy is a special meetings policy. Again, we had Jerry take a look at this one. He made a couple of minor changes when Patrick, Jen, and I met on Monday. We tweaked it a little bit further, you'll see the red line version here. But again, you're going to find that essentially what's reflected here is what's being done in practice. So we're not really changing anything that we're doing in practice today. So again, I'll open it up to the committee, any, any questions or comments, feedback?
Again, this is a first reading on this one as well.
Exactly, right. Yeah. So what we'll do next, if no, no comments on that one as well, we'll, we'll send both of these back out to Jerry. Just get his final blessing on it, and then we'll bring it back for a second reading, and we can approve it at that.
That would be great. Thank you. You all set, Joe?
Yep.
Okay, next agenda item, report of the assistant superintendent for business and human resources. Mrs. Perry?
Yes, I have for the committee's approval this evening for warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and nineteen cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars and ninety cents.
Motion from John, second from Patrick, all in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars and ten cents.
Motion from Jen, second from Joe, all in favor?
And the last warrant is in the amount of five hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred two dollars and forty-five cents.
Motion from John, second from Scott, all in favor?
And the next item is an out-of-state conference request from Mr. Craig Consigli, who would like to attend an annual conference on supervision and curriculum, curriculum development in April. And he feels this opportunity will allow him to be a more effective area in the area of instruction, curriculum, and assessment. It is a budgeted item, however, because it is out-of-state travel, it does require a school committee vote.
This is, this is two days out of the district, essentially?
Yes, returning on Monday.
And this is ASCD too, which is a nationally, internationally recognized educational organization. And they have a fabulous kind of oriented speakers and program set up.
Any discussion?
Foundationally, I have no, no issues with, the only question I would have is just, um, April's starting to sound awful out like when woodland's getting ready to open. I just want to make sure there's no, nothing that we need them here that wouldn't be, then I'm good. I'm like, sitting here, I'm like, God, April sixteen, boy, that's going to come quick. When woodland's getting ready to, we got a lot of stuff going on with woodland at that time, so the prince will out of town for two days.
Motion please. Scott, Joe, all in favor? And we have gifts. Okay, the first gift, the donor, Joseph and Renee Calery, name of the gift, School Family Network gift.
They do a good job there, so.
Yeah. Any amount of the gift is fifty dollars. Thank you very much. And the next gift is the Brookside Elementary PTO donation from the fundraiser. Holy cow, nine thousand, six hundred and twenty.
I think we did that one last week.
I thought we did that.
Unless they did it another way, would you?
No, no, there's no double.
If they did, we're going to hire them.
I apologize. That was, it's painting in the folder.
Yeah, I think we already did that one.
Yeah, we did, thanks.
Okay.
Need a vote, chairman?
Yep, I need a vote. Motion to accept the very generous Calery.
Some motion.
Scott, second from Pat, all in favor?
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, you and your wife, thank you very, very much, it's kind.
Like I said, they do a great job there, so.
Okay, subcommittee updates, policy?
So we met on, on Monday, we reviewed the two policies that we just discussed. We also started the process of, or started discussions around some other topics such as homework, social media use, and, um, drawn a blank, what was it there?
Religion.
Religion in schools.
Religion in schools, sorry. So, you know, obviously, we need to have a lot more conversation around each, each of those subjects and gather feedback from the leadership team and, and principals, so more to come. Our next meeting is scheduled for February first.
Can I make one comment too, Joe? We're going to be holding a homework forum on February twenty-second for parents and community members from six to seven P.M. At the Milford High School auditorium. We're going to be pushing this out to parents probably next week. And this is something we've been in the works for a little while, so it's interesting that it kind of converged with the, the topic and the, the policy.
Good. Wellness, we have not met, we meet January twenty-seventh. Scott, middle school East, reviews?
So we did have a meeting last night. In fact, actually, I think we've got a presentation at the next meeting in January, so we'll, we'll have, we do, and we'll kind of combine the two. So we'll have a lot of information, a lot of good granular detail for the next meeting.
Thank you. Patrick, woodland school?
We meet in the middle of the month, so at the next meeting, we'll have an update.
Okay. John, technology?
Yeah, we met on December twenty-second, Joe, myself, and the administration. The first thing to report is that the fiber loop, which has been much talked about, is now up and running along with the associated sonic walls, with the exception of one which is scheduled to be installed tomorrow. So that gives us the bandwidth that we purchased, which is a vast improvement in the internet speed. It'll now allow us to upgrade the networks. So it's, it's in place to do what we set out to do. And I would just like to point out, this has been discussed amongst us, but what we did purchase is bandwidth. You know, the, we didn't purchase a fiber loop. The fiber loop was installed by Comcast in order to deliver us the bandwidth, so that's been discussed. I now have a better understanding of it, and I just wanted to put that out there for all of you and anybody listening at home, just to clear up any conceptions or misconceptions on that. And secondly, and probably more importantly, the E-rate submission is being prepared. It's getting very close to complete, to be, to be submitted, January?
I'm just waiting on one item, and as soon as that's delivered, we'll turn it right around. So I'm hoping for a week to two weeks.
Yeah, so I think we're far ahead of the curve on this, on this topic this year.
Any questions for John? Joe, climate, culture, and morale?
So Bob shared the survey results with all of you prior to, to the holiday, so you should have that. I know he met with the leadership team this, yesterday, this morning? Yesterday, and reviewed the, the survey results with them. Our next meeting is scheduled for February eleventh. So at that point in time, the, the members of that committee should have had an opportunity to sit down with the principal and talk through the results at each individual school. And, and that's when we'll really start to, to try and put together a, an action plan going forward to address some of the issues that were brought up.
Should we expect, what should we expect, like a full, like, report?
I would say probably that, that following school committee meeting, so the second one in February, we'll have a full report. So the idea there is to obviously summarize the, the feedback and then start to talk through how we're going to address some of the concerns.
Patrick, I'll make sure that's on as an agenda item for that meeting.
I've been, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, next agenda item, school liaison updates. Has anybody had an opportunity to get into their schools?
I had the chance to go to Brookside and talk to Lisa, she's, no issues, everything's going smoothly, so.
Everything's good?
Yep, no problems.
That's what we like to hear.
That's good.
Okay, next agenda item, future agenda items?
I have just two, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
Uh, one, just wanted to get an update on, obviously, we've, we've made a, made an extension of a contract negotiation with Dr. McIntyre moving in. Just wanted to get an update, just kind of see where we are with regards to the future of the assistant superintendent of curriculum and design position. I think that may be on the slot for Saturday as part of our agenda items for budget, but also just to get an update is, what's the future of that position?
Okay.
The second one would just be, it's actually more, not so much an agenda item, just sort of, new, sort of, I guess, in our new business type of idea. I actually had some parents that actually reached out. They were very pleased to see that we moved as quickly as we did with regards to the new superintendent. Actually, one of the asks was actually not, was from some teachers as well, from some parents. Would there be an appetite to do sort of a town hall forum, so to sort of introduce, have an opportunity to have Bob and Kevin during this transition time, speak with parents, speak with teachers, and kind of do a town hall forum as, as part of the leadership team and, as well as with the leadership team overall?
We're looking at a couple options of doing that, actually, in the second half of the year. And I'm not sure if one event or going to each potentially like PTO at each school and doing kind of a question and answer, I don't know exactly what we call it, but like, kind of an open forum.
A town hall then.
Yeah, a little presentation and opportunity to speak, maybe at each, at each PTO, and then maybe we'll find out a way to do it, maybe at each level of, for the teachers. If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, it was something I was.
Yeah, we've been, we've been wrestling around. Bob and I have been talking about the best way to kind of do that type of a thing. And I think maybe we'll bring a plan, maybe at the next school committee meeting. I think it'll be a quick five-minute item, if that works.
Any other future agenda items, Jen?
Yes, Kevin had sent us a really great document comparing or kind of summarizing the changes.
the changes that are coming up with the moves for the eighth to Stacy and fifth down to Woodland. If we could have an update on that and where you are, there are so many items on there that hadn't been addressed yet, that obviously it's all a process.
On the transition Q and A?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we just met on that.
We met, actually, very productive meeting today, Joe.
Fantastic.
I mean, it was a great, just such a comprehensive document that once some of those boxes really start getting filled in with the plan, it would be nice to share that with the community.
Yeah, today we spent, just to comment on that, we spent a vast majority of the day working on the personnel assignments. And those letters are set to go out on January twenty-fifth. And also what we did is, we really wanted to get the input from the staff and it really kind of links with the morale and the culture pieces to find out, particularly among our specialists, I mean, like, you know, our, our music, physical education, also team chairs and people who may not be just in the classroom, to see where might they have an interest? And based on their certification, did they have an interest? And we get their feedback. And I'm really pleased to report that of the responses we got, I don't know, there was more than a handful of them, there's probably ten or twelve responses, we were able to actually accommodate everybody's preference.
That's great.
Actually, all but one, actually. But it was really well done. So we considered this really, we started this process of, of personnel reassignment last year. We began that with Nancy and Craig and with a number of others. And so that was the work that we did today, which led us into the transition planning to take up that Q and A document. And we actually had James Reestall in today, happened to meet with us about the logistics around moving. So we introduced James to the transition committee of staff, represented from each building, and we're able to answer some questions around moving logistics. So we began to do that planning as well. I'm sorry, James Reestall is our project manager.
Oh, okay.
From Jostlin, my certain associates. So there's really, I think everyone left, I don't know if you agree, but I think everyone left the room feeling pretty well informed today.
And I think they understood the level of detail we're putting into the process of placing each teacher, because we actually have spoken about each individual teacher and where they're going to be placed multiple times. So it's not, we're not drawing names out of the hat and going.
Right.
Right.
It's, it's a very thoughtful, step-by-step process where we're really looking at, and it's a lot of variables and a lot of variables have come up throughout the process that we didn't anticipate initially, that we've, we've had to address as, as they've kind of arisen.
The, the last point I'll make on this is the important first step of where the teacher's going is then would lead into, you know, about the move, if there's, if there's items, this is particularly important for eighth grade moving to Stacy in that fifth grade space, you know, will they have to swap out furniture? There could be logistics there of things to be moved and all that's part of the, part of the discussion we've been having. So I think we're really well, I wouldn't say we're ahead of the game, but we're well on the mark for January twenty-fifth, possibly sooner, to get those letters out. So people have that. And in the words of Joe Strazula, who's actually one of the members of the transition, he said, you know, I think that these letters will alleviate eighty percent, if not more, of, of some of the anxiety around that transition. So we're well, we're really well positioned to be ready for this move in every aspect, I think, for rates five through, five through eight.
Patrick?
I was, I was going to mention this under old business. It ties into what Bob and Kevin are talking about now. I've been, I've been doing my best to attend as many of these transition committee meetings as I can and I got immediate reports back after the end of today's meeting from a couple of teachers who spoke about how well the meeting went today and how so many of the teachers' concerns were addressed. It's, it's the little things I've been finding that the teachers are most concerned about. When will I have time to pack my room? When will I have time to unpack my room? And there was a lot of sort of creative thought that went into aligning, insert professional days, moving them around a little bit, which hopefully will have the committee support here sometime in the very near future when Bob comes back with the schedule. So they have time to sort of unpack some of these, these boxes and, you know, they send a survey out about the schedule and the schedule seems to work and so everyone's sort of resigning themselves that this is what the schedule is going to be and some don't like it, but they're okay with it because they're informed. And I think a, a big part of what's been coming out of this process and what I really wanted to come out of this process is that there isn't sort of a blindside, sort of packet of information, oh, by the way, this is your room and this is what you're teaching now and so everybody just move your stuff. And this has really been working, honestly, exactly the way I hoped that it would, where there's been a cadence of communication. We, we broadcast as much information as we have and then we update when we have more information. And so it started out a little rocky, I think, but it's been really smoothing out very, very nicely. It's been picking up speed and it seems like the teachers are more confident and more comfortable with the way this, this building transition is, is going to work. So it's, it's really, that's really great news and some of the, the positive comments coming out of the meeting were really, really good today.
That's, that's great to hear.
Yeah, it's nice to hear.
Absolutely. And I agree with the rocky start. I think a lot of it was just because there were so many unknowns, everything was just being thrown on the table and the, the work that Kevin and I had been doing was, and along with Kathy and with Megan, with Jen, was to take it and somehow consolidate it all into some thoughtful questions that needed to be answered. And once we got to that point where we could sort of organize our thoughts, now that the meetings have taken a tenor that's very positive, very productive, and I'm really glad to hear that feedback. Thanks for sharing that.
And not that everybody's happy, but everybody understands.